All right, good evening. Thanks for everyone to joining our Planning Commission meeting tonight, Monday, February 14th, 7:00 PM. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, and Secretary DeBolt, can I get you to take attendance for me?
Schenkel.
Present.
Mutcha.
Present.
Manchester.
Present.
Portella.
No.
Cox.
Present.
DeLonge.
No.
Holmes.
Here.
Newman. And DeBolt, yes.
All right, next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. I'll call for a motion for that approval.
Chair Schenkel, I sub move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Motion by Mutcha.
Second by Holmes.
Thank you. And this is a majority, correct, Jim? We no longer need to roll call.
Roll call only if it involves finances.
Thank you. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. This time, we will open it up to citizen comments. We do not have any citizens present with us in the room tonight, but if there are any comments from the audience tuning in on Zoom, you have, you'll need to state your full name, your home address, and have four minutes with the comments.
One thing before we, and we do have a gentleman who's called in, but before that, as we know, we'll be up on YouTube, and interesting enough, we're averaging 80 to 100 people after governmental meeting viewing within the first eight to 10 days. It's, we're, you know, this'll be our third governmental meeting where, in the era we're living, just at people's different comfort levels, to create a hybrid, open meeting, where we're meeting in person, those comfortable in the community could certainly join us in person, but those that might not, for whatever reason, and we'll continue this well as we escape the COVID era, but to give our citizens access to call in and speak to whatever governmental board there and forum. So that's what we have, is we set up a Zoom webinar, and Mr. Steers, after you state your name and address, and I do want to publicly, in front of the board, thank you a couple weeks ago for working with Alex Lee and I one afternoon, calling in multiple times so we can get better at this, but if you can state your name and address, as Chair Person Schenkel said, you can go ahead and speak to the Planning Commission.
Well, Jim, I just want to thank you and the staff and the council and the Planning Commission, frankly, for what I consider a historic meeting. This opportunity was echoed by probably not one of my political favorite people, but Dana Nessel last week, and I will have to give credit to the Democrats in the state legislator and in the state party have done a lot to increase the transparency in terms of the Open Meetings Act and straighten some things out over the last couple of years. I've been a part of the Water Use Advisory Council for probably the last 10, 12 years, on and off, had a lot of problems over there, and she stated in her letter last week that this is a chance to give the disabled, she just focused on the disabled, I think that it goes farther than that for the working people of America and elderly and a lot of other people, that it's past time that the genie was let out of the bottle during COVID, that we at least listen to the people that we serve. And I just want to commend the Planning Commission for, you know, I know there's a lot of people who probably don't really appreciate having their faces on television and probably never figured that they would ever do this, but I really believe it's showing your children and grandchildren what government's all about, and when Jim said that the council will be reverting back to the three minutes, you know, after everybody had spoken at the council, that is just so huge that we are able to come to you, listen to you, and then speak after you, so that if we have things, and I've been through the Planning Commission before on this exact same matter, that there are people out in this community, my age and much older, that can add to this agenda, can add to what you say every, every month, and they have a lot to say that can make you better representatives of the people. Now, we're not always right, you may not always agree with us, but we come from different backgrounds, you know, mines and pumps and industrial systems and processes system and troubleshooting and things like that, and so when I come to the Planning Commission, I would look for you folks to possibly, hopefully, be more educated on things like sewer and water and infrastructure, and the things that really, I believe, the Planning Commission is just so critical to have voices in, like I know, I know my neighbor Don, I haven't spoken to him a long time, he's an expert in MBOT affairs, he's been a long career there, I think that you need people that understand what infrastructure means to a community as our dollars go away. And so when I see Brady Township, unfortunately, to put a master plan out that says, you know, well, if we, just when we need water, we'll just go get it from either Portage or Vicksburg, or, yeah, we've got a sewer line that runs down Sprinkle Road, and that's, that's pretty much our plan, is that we have one. We all know that that sewer line is undersized. We know that we want an industrial park on the corner of V and Sprinkle. We all know, and I'm going to end here, we all know that we need water and that water's hard to find, and I just encourage and want to thank you, all the Planning Commission members, for allowing us to talk, allowing us to someday be partners with you on the tough decisions that you will have to make in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Steers, appreciate that.
John, if you're still on the phone, can you just state your address so when the clerk writes the minutes for this?
Um, hang on for a second, I guess I, sorry about that, I'm a little, I just need to unmute myself, correct?
We can hear you.
Still hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, if you can just state your address.
Yeah, okay. I didn't hear what you said, Jim, I'm sorry, the ads, I apologize.
Yeah, no, I just need your, your home address stated so the clerk.
Home address, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, yes, it's 5786 East UV Avenue.
Fantastic, thanks a lot, appreciate you calling in.
Yep, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Manager Mallory, does not appear that there's any other folks on our, on our line here, so I think we can move on to our next agenda item, approval of the minutes. You are approving the minutes from November 8th, we did not have Planning Commission meetings in December or January, so.
That was the one change, and I apologize interrupting, because Mr. DeBolt got ahold of me, and he was correct, we, I put in front of you the October minutes as well, because they hadn't received Planning Commission Board approval to move off draft, so I don't know if Kyle's comfortable, if we can have the agenda reflect that the minutes are regular meetings from November 8th and October, if someone can help me with the date.
October 11th.
October 11th. If we can get individual approval on both of those, and then we.
One motion or two?
Probably do two.
So, just for clarification, we have two meeting minutes in front of us from November and October. Each will require its own motion for approval. So, at first, I will entertain a motion for October approval of minutes.
This is Cox, I sub motion.
Cox?
Manchester, I support it, second.
Thank you. And all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried, and now for November.
Holmes, I move, we accept the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Support by Member Mutcha.
Mutcha. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda here is the Village Manager Report. We have a year-end Planning Commission report by Director Durkey.
Much to say on the Planning Commission report, there wasn't too much activity, or, you know, I kind of just narrowed it down to action items. In the annual report, I went back, the meeting, the recorded meetings made it really easy to compile that data, oftentimes, I'm looking to see what I have minutes for and not have minutes for, so I have all of that information there, and then the officers, as they're currently elected, and there were some items not on there, there were no zoning ordinance amendments, so there was no amendments put on the list, but there was one rezoning, which was the funeral home properties at 409 South Main, 114 East Park, and the vacant parking lot, all from R2 to C2. One site plan approved, that was for the e-mobility addition, and then similar to that, there was an opinion rendered for a variance for that same addition, because the building covered 38% of the parcel, or 30% as a maximum, and the Planning Commission gave a favorable recommendation to the ZBA, and that was ultimately approved, as was the rezoning for the funeral homes by council. If there's any other questions on it, the only other thing I would add to it, but it wasn't necessarily a Planning Commission item, was the finalization of the recodification of village ordinances, which the new books are in, and everything's updated on the website. If there's any questions, let me know. Thank you.
Next item is 2022-23 fiscal year budget needs, wants, and wishes from Manager Mallory.
Yeah, right before I get to that, I want to let the Planning Commission know that reluctantly, I accepted Bobby Durkey a few months ago, contacted me, referenced his schedule with the city of Kalamazoo, and far, far more important is the fact he's a father of four beautiful daughters that are very involved in the schools now, and he has appropriately made the decision that first and foremost, the time with those daughters are probably better spent on the second Monday of the month than with us. I'm sure he'll be available to visit the dugout, and I can pick his brain every once in a while, but we will, next month, be recognizing Bobby for, for him being a valued member of our team of the Village of Vicksburg, and I'll be sure to include all the Planning Commission members in that when that occurs. It, I believe, right now is slated on the first Monday of March, but I'll be confirming with Bobby that his family can be in attendance, and, but I will keep you apprised of that as well. So, thank you, Bobby.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Been a blessing, so. Yeah, this is the first discussion here in the, before the end of the month, I'll be sending a written survey to all the Planning Commission members for input, both village-wide and then specific to the Downtown Development Association area as well, for how we set up a fiscal year budget, we try to just base it on needs, wants, and wishes. So, in all the hats that you wear as residents, specific to your neighborhoods, specific to the overall village, and then as your roles here on the Planning Commission and the Downtown Development Authority, to, to, what do you feel this village needs to provide? The basic needs, what would you want the village to provide, and then we all have wishes that, and, and we want to capture that opinion. One of the real positive things that developed in 2020 and 2021 is forcing people like me to get more comfortable with technology. Last year, we held five Zoom meetings with different organized neighborhoods and entities to solicit their opinions in the budget. We're going to expand that this year, we're going to go to those organized neighborhoods as well, to, to create that environment, and then at least one village-wide where it will be put out to citizens, and depending on how that goes, there might be additional ones, but I think society in general has become pretty adept to, to the Zoom-type meetings, and it helps, I think, to get as much input on where people want the priorities to be. So be looking for that, and all of you have been through a budget process before, but if you had any questions specific to the process, and then what I would be looking for is when, to get the survey in your hands, if you can get it back to me individually, hopefully, the week prior to our next meeting, and then we'll facilitate a conversation based on your responses at, at the next Planning Commission meeting. That would be in March, we'd be formulating the DDA portion of it to come in front of this board for approval in May, and ultimately to the council in June, and be scheduled to have that budget in place by June 30th.
Jim, looking to get some clarification on the dates you're talking about, you're saying the survey is going to be to us by when?
It is, if everything goes as my calendar suggests, it'll be out to you by February 23rd.
And then you want it back before the March meeting?
Yeah, we would, we would give two weeks and to, to receive it back by March 9th, and it would be on our agenda to discuss as a group at the March 14th meeting. And out of the March 14th meeting, what we would, as a staff, would be looking to do then is work with the DDA Subcommittee to narrow in on DDA goals and expectations for the 22-23 fiscal year, and continue that conversation at the April meeting.
Thank you. Excuse me, any other questions for Manager Mallory regarding the budget planning process for next year? Okay, village updates?
Yeah. Village updates, I mean, the, you might have noticed on Washington Street, we have a couple excavators that have arrived, looking sometime, certainly in the month of March, hopefully in the first 15 days, that the project will, which is in it, is about 80% complete, but it will continue to move on Washington Street westbound towards the lift station. In March, you'll see work on the lift station and, and as the weather permits, to finish that sewer project into the lift station, we, the water project will be up near the, the Speedway off of Prairie Street to correct some issues there. So, so that downtown, the traffic lights are working, the crosswalk lights are working. We're, right now, we met last week with the company that we purchased downtown furniture to narrow some where we're going to place furniture, those, that was all designed, the furniture aspect, prior to the village having a social district, it might, I bring, it was a few months ago, back in the summer, both, both this board and the council approved DDA expenditures, I'm going on memory, I believe it was not to exceed a $10,000 or $12,000 limit, I, whatever that limit was, on the purchasing of up to eight additional tables that have built-in chairs. So we're trying to figure out once, because those will be permanently placed, where, where they should best fit. The other project that parallels this is, I'll say, late in the calendar year, because I, is in front of the council, the council asked me to start exploring different communities that have similar situated downtowns, outdoor seating, hangout areas of the expectations those communities have from merchants, whether they're uniformed furniture, these type of issues, and I hope to be in a position to present those findings and recommendation to the council at their second meeting in March, which is the third Monday. So it all kind of is layered in, in that, and looking for, the other is, and I, if you have questions probably in, in today's meeting, best is, we have, I've assigned and asked Alex Lee to lead 2022 as 150th anniversary of the Village of Vicksburg, so he has already began formulating a plan on events within, in utilizing our downtown. Construction schedule for the park, just, again, it's on, on paper, but the project's been approved, it's been awarded, today had conversations, the goal is, and expectation is, the park is fully done by May 20th, which is in plenty of time for the car show, we're looking at when kind of a grand opening event for our downtown, but we want the park completed, and, and some aspects that we've, going outside, that'll be part of the discussions with DDA financing, is also putting EV, electric vehicle charging station as part of the park project, since we're opening up some of the ground and the power, so it, it will be separate, if you will, the expenditures and approval process for, for that item, but, but we think that would be a, a nice addition in the move that we're making here in the village, and I tend to, I'll pause here for any questions or, or comments you might have.
Jim, this is Member DeBolt, the furniture, it's already been purchased, correct? For the stuff?
There, there's been some furniture, I don't know if there's multiple mics on here that's creating that backfeed.
It's mine.
No, there, there has been, as we looked at it, and the furniture that has been purchased, our tables that are fixed to the ground, but the chairs are loose, they're high-backed chairs, and we're looking at that being in the Liberty Lane, east and west bumpout areas, it's a, the traffic there is designed to be basically about 15 miles an hour in that block, so the tables we're looking to expand are the bumpouts in front of, on Main Street, which would be more like the Liberty Lane east customized furniture, where the chairs are affixed to the tables, it's a lot heavier, and we know of plans that some downtown businesses have, that especially the Hideaway has plans of opening up that exterior wall, and, and others that we feel this additional furniture will complement. And the direction from the council is we'd like a consistent look, and that, that's actually when we went through that approval process, we knew we needed additional furniture, now it's just honing in on the, what's going to be investment-wise, lifespan-wise, practical-wise, and make a decision. The company we're working with has, constructs their own furniture, and they're an eight-to-10 week lead time, so our, our timeline on that decision process is the first meeting in March at the council, will present what, what the specific furniture we're recommending, though the money's been approved already, I want the council to be, to know why we are recommending the style we are.
Thank you. Jim, just a quick question, regarding those areas where we have the, the orange pylons on the sidewalks, is, is that where some of the furniture is going, just?
There's, if you're talking on Main Street, where there's a little.
Yes, on Main Street.
Yeah. The pylons are there to draw attention to where there's a three, three-and-a-half-inch drop. Part was looking at what furniture would fit there, I, I believe the conversations that we've had, and we're going to have another one next week with the landscape designer, it'll probably move to some, some potted, some pots with, with plants to draw people's attention to that area, but, but initially, we thought for, you know, a bench or something would, but there's other reasons, now we're moving in a different direction to have that highlighted. Right now, subject to change, but as we left last week's meeting, Liberty Lane West on the side of Jasper's would have a shorter sit-down, the, there's four or five shorter sit-down tables with the shorter chairs around them, and the west side, on the side of the hardware store, has the taller tables, the, I think the sit-down tables are 36 inches or 42 inches, and the taller ones are 26 inches and more, they have the taller high-backed chairs, so that's the configuration right now we're looking at, we're having a discussion reference, the loose chairs. We didn't, on the original order of the, this, we, we didn't have much discussions on, on that, on the order being placed, so.
One quick question, do you know on the edges of the social distancing, we just had like throwaway cardboard receptacles, are we going to go with something more permanent?
Yeah, no, there's a permanent receptacles that'll all match with a professional design. We did, we upgraded from the, we now have, I'll call them the, they're from Home Depot, a more hard Rubbermaid trash can.
Oh, okay.
To get us through this winter and the rest of, but, but on the grand opening, that's when the final product of receptacles and, and smoke cigarette butt type receptacles, and, and all of that'll be put out, and they all match.
Okay.
So. We're also on that, if, if you've seen, we, we invested in a pretty deluxe tractor, snow removal for downtown with the, with this investment in the new sidewalks and that, and that's another reason, Rick, we didn't put out that new stuff, is we want to make sure it looks, it's pristine on grand opening day versus me hitting it as I'm plowing snow.
Any other questions for Manager Mallory? All right, we do not have any action items under, under the Planning Commission portion of our agenda, but I'm going to toss it back to Manager Mallory to talk about our Downtown Development Authority finances, and after that, Mr. Lee, for the events coming up.
Yeah, I've, I've provided each of you with a hard copy of, of the finances, and, and we're only through the second quarter, we're, we're right now in the process of, of budget amendments, one budget amendment that'll be incorporated and will come in front of this group next month is. month is, is those, that approval for, for the furniture purchases within this fiscal year. But our revenue is on track, what we, we thought it would be. And where our overall bank balance is, we're, we're in excellent shape. What you should see or look forward to in March is budget amendments up to that point, as well as we'll have the detailed listing of who invested in the fire suppression system program. We kind of put the DDA facade program on, the traditional one on hold and upped the money. And we'll have that detailed report presented in March, as well as our recommendations for the 22-23 to, to, to help the subcommittee in what type of facade program the DDA can look at in different options. And, and that's, we will provide the subcommittee options and hopefully those options get to the full board. And one of the things that we're going to present is option, options that have traditionally been done, but also two or three other options to really look at. Do we want to, you know, utilize that DDA money, investing with our developer investment downtown at, in other manners as well? So it would still be a, those options would all include a facade or grant opportunities for business owners downtown. And then, as I said, on the, the 22 events, I think Alex has had multiple meetings, probably three to five meetings on, on these events. One event in March, there will be a food truck event on Main Street. We're looking at, I believe it was a Thursday night? A Thursday night, just to begin to again utilize that area and bring people downtown and give merchants exposure to that type of event. We haven't narrowed down the date on conceptual form, both the food truck group and Alex's group have committed to the event taking place in March, but we'll certainly get that date out as we want as many people to participate in it as, as possible and begin to experience downtown.
Jim, can, can you remind me what the renovation loan program consists of again? It's not the, that's not the, that's not the same thing as the fire suppression, right?
No, that was a program, it's a revolving program, and I don't know what year, but the Vicksburg Foundation graciously created a $30,000 revolving grant where those monies are available to downtown, actually, it's village-wide, a business in the village. And it's at a low interest rate, the payments are scheduled and it's keeping track. We didn't, the total amount available now, it's less than $10,000, but each payment, it adds to what could be the next loan. And John, if you can help me out, you, I mean, you, you're before me in the DDA when that program might have started.
What it involves is it's a, it's an opportunity for businesses in Vicksburg to borrow up to $10,000 from the DDA that is provided by the Vicksburg Foundation at a zero-interest loan. The paper forms are be, are to be prepared by the village attorney's office, which they pay the $250 to $300 for preparing the loan. And the money is set up through monthly payments back to the village. And they, the village, I have to commend the village because it's been very good about making sure that the people that have had the loans have paid them back on time. During COVID, we did have a couple grace months, which the village awarded those businesses at the time for the hardships they were going through. They were very grateful to that and they're back, you see they're back on payments. We only have two outstanding loans at this time. At one time, we had five. At the one, at one time, we had five different businesses that had used that. Again, it's to, it's to allow the businesses to have a zero-interest loan, credit program.
The, the total available right now is $25,551.07. The maximum individual loan under the, the grant criteria that was worked with, with the foundation would be a maximum of $10,000. So, so you'd be looking at two full maximum loans could be granted as well, well, a half one after that. But again, each month, we get, get payments where that is. So that's going to be a part of as well, those, you know, options as we look at the 22-23 fiscal year and make sure we communicate it with business, businesses.
Any other questions for staff regarding the DDA? Do we have events from Mr. Lee?
I, I did, well, he just, that was him telling me to remind myself to mention he has, since July, or January 1st, has met three or four times with, with some people and it's on track, so.
All right.
Among other things, I have Mr. Lee.
One, one thing, when, when they do, do these functions that they're planning for this year, for the, for the 150th anniversary, which, which Alex has been working with these things, I think we really need to focus on the businesses in town to be involved with those nightly procedures, nightly things that are going on. And I think you'll get a lot of response by going to them personally and talking with those businesses, those night businesses, even those day businesses that are not open at night.
No, you're, yeah, that's, it'll, that'll be done as well.
I'd like to just make one recommendation while we're here at the DDA. Member DeLong is not able to be with us tonight, however, she has expressed interest in getting more involved in the DDA component of the planning commission. So as chair, I'd like to recommend that Ms. DeLong is put onto our subcommittee for the DDA to, to help support and provide support with that. She has a wealth of knowledge, knowledge in that field and I think, I think that would be a good fit for, for her, so. Any questions or comments on that? Great. So we'll move on to the next item here is member comments. So open up to the planning commission, any comments from this group? Go ahead and jump in.
I just have one comment. When you explained earlier, Bobby, will you be stepping down as director or will you just be stepping back a little bit?
I, I'm no longer employed at the village after March 4th. So, yeah, I'm stepping down.
I have no problem letting this planning commission know. A year ago, I don't know, inside a year ago, Bobby and I started talking about this. I inappropriately talked him out of it. And the last conversation, appropriately, Mrs. Mallory reminded me that he is a father of four and so, yeah.
Will be well missed.
Just to let the planning commission know, I'm, am exploring options to continue to have a representative on my team in this area with that expertise. So we're exploring different options and I just, I'm going to make sure it's a village manager selection and I'm going to make sure it fits well with the village manager's team, so.
Yeah, along those same lines, Bobby, I know we'll have more time to talk about it, but your expertise and knowledge has been very helpful, very much appreciate the guidance that you've given myself and this, this commission over your time. You will be certainly missed, but I can certainly understand and respect your decision, so wish you nothing but the best, Bobby. Thank you.
Bobby, seeing how you're still with us until March 4th, I do have one request. Before you leave, if you could have a, or even Jim, a printed copy of the ordinance that we could at least have at our meetings moving forward, so if we do need to reference anything, we do have a hard copy with us. That may be more for Mr. Mallory to have on hand.
Yeah, we, we have it, it's, it's all electronically. I'll bring a hard copy, so it is here, but each of the laptops are loaded already pre-
Even better than.
If, because it's connected to, to our website, has them all now updated.
Great.
Is that under the planning commission website or?
No, it's on the village website and I can make sure you each have a link to it. So it's, on the computer I look at, it's always on the left-hand side, but I'll, I'll send you the link, it's on the front page of the website and you should be able to connect to it.
Any other member comments? All right, adjourn this meeting, 7:45. Thank you, everyone. Happy Valentine's Day.